Okay, it's four o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy. And Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
And if you'll all stand, and we'll say, "Pledge of allegiance to have a moment of silence."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no awards and proclamations, so we'll go to Citizens Forum. Is there anyone here who would like to speak regarding an item that is not on the agenda today? If so, come to the podium and give your name and address. Doesn't look like it. Item five.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the Proposed 2016 Amended Budget.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. For any public comment on the amended budget, 2016 amended budget.
I just have a quick question on, um... All of these are fairly self-explanatory. Can you, can you tell us on the sales tax, the economic development portion, kind of what that, kind of just give a... Seems to be some anticipations in there and some assumptions. Can you just kind of maybe go through that?
Yes. The 2016 budget is adopted in August of the prior year. Sometimes you don't exactly know the commitments you have for the following year. Specifically for the Sales Tax Economic Development Fund, it was budgeted for $378,000, and that did not include the full amount for the SEDO payment, the Salinas Lane Economic Development Organization. And there's some other things that, in order to preserve the general fund for 2016, in order to preserve the fund balance a little better, we're going to move some expenses out to that fund, including that, the SEDO payment. That'll be paying out of that economic development fund rather than the general fund, and that was not anticipated when the budget was adopted.
Okay. And so, this, what's typically the annual budget for that, then? Is it typically around $375,000?
That would be my assumption. I've honestly haven't looked back at years prior to '16 to tell you.
Well, we estimate about $330,000 plus or so for the revenue side, but typically, historically, we've actually budgeted for it almost to be spent down, just so if we ever, because as you know, that's used for a few things. One is for some of the organizational costs, but a lot of it is, is if there's a major business prospect that comes to town, and we're looking at using that as an incentive pot, which was, is the primary use of those funds. Who knows what that business prospect might be? So historically, we've actually budgeted to pretty much use it all, but in, but that doesn't happen in real life.
Okay, we don't have any anticipated uses that...
Not right now, outstanding, no.
Okay.
Nothing of significance or anything like that.
Or proposed or anything, okay.
Right. And that's why when it talks about the fund balance, with it anticipating it would be under 100, that was an assumption that, what if we had this, what if we had that, and it would be used down, when in reality it doesn't. But it gives you that budgeting flexibility, so if you get a prospect, we don't have them in the budget. But in essence, that's why you see a much higher balance than anticipated.
Okay. And is that pretty much the fund that is the SEDIC fund balance?
Yeah, that's why you hear us use the slang, the SEDIC fund.
Okay. And so there may even be action taken on that to roll it into something else, too? Or if, now that the EDO is kind of taking off, is there, is there the possibility of disbanding the SEDIC and using it still that sort of fund, but not in that, but not in that form?
Sure. Yeah, you have a resolution that was put together, I think, back in 2005, and it addressed the, it addressed the uses of the funds, and it also addressed the role of your Salina Economic Development Incentives Council, which is an advisory board on those business prospect matters. And with the EDO and a director now, it looks like, taking office here soon, we'll need to have conversations, but I sort of anticipate that the S, what we call the SEDIC, your committee, your council, is probably redundant, because it was really, in essence, made up of the same partner agencies, anyway, and that we likely will, well, and I'd recommend that we would change that over to the EDO, but we'll need to bring something more formal to you and have a conversation about that, to do that. But I would anticipate that to be the natural thing we would do. I think in that case, though, your, your, your sales tax dollars stay in the same pot. And then, for example, if you get a prospect in, they go through the EDO, and they recommend some type of an incentive, and they'd be working with staff and all of that, and working with you, and we bring an agreement. You could see a similar form that you've always seen in the past. The only difference might be that the advisory recommendation would come from your EDO versus the old SEDIC. That'd be about the only difference from that perspective, I would think.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Michelle? Okay. Thank you. Public hearing is still open. Anyone have any questions regarding the proposed 2016 amended budget? Please come forward if you have any questions. Okay. It is closed, and I'll accept a motion to accept the proposed 2016 budget.
Just real quick for clarification, you're not actually going to take action today?
Okay.
There will be another public hearing held on December 19th, and you can formally approve it at that time.
Okay, well, I wondered about that. I didn't see anything there. Okay. Good. So we're not, we're not needing to take any action?
Correct.
Okay. All right, good. We're down to a consent agenda. Anyone wishing to take anything off the consent agenda? If not, I'll accept a motion to...
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, I'm a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as printed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Let's see, that takes us to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 16-10870, annexing the Riverwoods Natural Area located east of the Flood Control Levy, south of Cloud Street.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about ordinance number 16-10870, second reading? There's been no comments since that time? Since the first reading was on November 28th, been no comments since that time?
I move we approve on second reading, ordinance number 16-10870, annexing the Riverwoods Natural Area.
Second.
Okay, and motion and a second to approve ordinance number 16-10870. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Crawford.
Aye. 7.2.
Item 7.2, second reading, ordinance number 16-10869, vacating a 46-foot portion of a 20-foot east-west utility easement located on Lot 1, Block 1 of Whittier School, addition to the city of Salina, Kansas.
I don't believe we had any comment.
Okay, the second reading on ordinance number 16-10869 was passed on first reading on November 28th. Since that time, no comments have been received. A motion, need a motion on second reading, please?
Madam, go right ahead, sir.
Madam Mayor, move approval on second reading, ordinance number 16-10869, vacating a 46-foot portion of a 20-foot east-west utility easement located on Lot 1, Block 1 of the Whittier School, addition to the city of Salina.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 16-10869. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Crawford.
Aye. 7.3, please.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 16-7417, approving the Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District Members Agreement.
Okay. Go ahead, Martha.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District is the result of years of ongoing discussion about the operation of Canoplis Reservoir and the Smoky Hill River as it relates to the needs of the stakeholders below the reservoir since the drought conditions in 2006, when we virtually saw the Smoky Hill River go dry. The Access District legislation was passed in 2011, and this Access District allows the Kansas Water Office, with the approval of the Kansas Water Authority, to provide access to water storage owned by the state in Canoplis Reservoir to surface water users below the reservoir, which is from the dam at Canoplis Lake to the confluence of the Smoky Hill and Solomon Rivers east of Salina. And this allows for municipal, industrial, recreation, and irrigation users, which is different from previous years. Prior to this, the industrial and municipal were the only entities that had the ability to apply for this water storage. With this legislation, it can now include the irrigators and recreation. The creation of this district, what it really does is allows the stakeholders, which is currently the city of Salina, and the irrigators, to better manage this valuable resource of the flow from the reservoir and the flow in the Smoky Hill River. The water that is stored in Canoplis will be released upon call from either the irrigators or the city of Salina, and it will be utilized by the city or the irrigators in times of drought. What we really have is an insurance policy here for drought conditions. When we looked at our long-term, 50-year water supply plan, drought was really our issue. We have lots of water supply and water rights on paper, but during droughts, when we really have an issue. So this is a part of our long-term plan, and it really deals with drought conditions. The rules and regulations required to implement the Access District were developed in August of 2013. There were six major steps that needed to be undertaken. The first was the irrigators to form a special irrigation district, so they could participate as a member in the Access District, which they did in December of 2013. The second step was for the City Commission to authorize and submit an application to the Kansas Water Office indicating our desire to purchase 4,668 acre-feet of storage in the reservoir, and the request to form the Access District. The 4,660 acre-feet request was based on the city's desire to meet our needs in 2060 through two seasons, one being an irrigation season for those months, and then one for a full summer, was what that number was based upon. The third step took place today in study session. The incorporating governing body convened, and they selected a incorporating chairperson, and approved the Articles of Incorporation, and have those ready to be filed with the Kansas Secretary of the State. Once this step was done, that group is dissolved, and the next step we move forward with is the Board of Directors of the Access District, which is a seven-member group, which consists of five city commissioners and the president and vice president of the irrigation district. That group will reconvene on December 19th after the City Commission meeting. At that time, they will approve the Access District bylaws, contract with the Kansas, the state of Kansas, for the water supply in the Canoplis Reservoir. The final step is to develop an operations agreement between the Kansas Water Office, Division of Water Resources, and the Access District. And this is the final step, and it's the document that we'll live by for the next many years, and it implements the policies and responsibilities regarding how this system's going to operate, who's going to use water, how it's going to be protected by the Division of Water Resources, and how we work together as partners with the irrigation district and the city to accomplish this. The item for today pertains to the Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District Members Agreement and the Articles of Incorporation. And that agreement was attached to your packet and has been reviewed. It covers the formation of the Access District, the agreements that need to be entered into, the financial responsibilities of all parties, that pertains to the cost, the administration, operating costs, and also talks about the Special Irrigation District and how they assess charges to their members. A budget allocation of $2.5 million has been included in the major capital improvement program. I think it's probably been in there since about 2014, and it's, was included in the 2016 plan. Our plan is to fund that from the Water and Wastewater Reserve Fund. The payment due to the state of Kansas is $2,477,067.18. Staff has identified some options for the City Commission's consideration. Option one is approve Resolution Number 16-7417, authorizing the mayor to execute the Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District Members Agreement, including approval of the Articles of Incorporation. Option two is to deny Resolution Number 16-7417, resulting in rejection of the proposed agreement, or option three, instruct staff regarding amending the proposed agreement. Staff recommends option one. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Well, before we have a motion, I just want to thank Martha Tasker, Kansas Water District people, Greg Bangston, and probably especially Jason Gage for leading us in this, in this whole task of, when we, the whole task of having water when we get to the place where we absolutely need it, like we did in 2006. I think it's wonderful that we seem to be the lead agency or the lead municipality, so we're leading the way on this, and I just think, thank you all for your tenaciousness and staying with it and getting this thing resolved with the irrigators, and, and thank the irrigators, too, for this very, very much. Okay. Need a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 16-7417, authorizing the mayor to execute the Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District Member Agreement, and that includes the approval of the Articles of Incorporation.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 16-7417. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carries. 7.4.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 16-7416, authorizing the mayor to execute a management agreement with Global Spectrum LP to manage the Bicentennial Center.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Mr. Hurdisty.
Yes. Today, for your consideration, I bring you a new management agreement for the Bicentennial Center with Global Spectrum. There has been one change that I should note in the agreement. I gave you a one-page document that was not included in your packet. It's actually just a minor change. It has to do with the convention attendee nights, and instead of printing out 48 pages of each document, I just changed the one page, and that's, that's there for you that I brought to you earlier today. As you recall, Global has been managing the operation at the Bicentennial Center since 2012. The initial agreement was a three-year term with two one-year options. The current agreement ends at the end of February. The new agreement is very similar in many regards. The agreement calls for an initial three-year term with an option for two additional years. In your blue sheet, there are many different statistics that we've laid out that have been gathered over the last few years regarding the operation. A significant number to note is the increase of events of over 25% since Global has taken over the operation. 2016 is projected to host 284 events at the center. Ron Wrightout and Rick Hauntz are here from Global Spectrum to answer any questions you have specific to the operations. In the blue sheet, there are also several highlights in the agreement. Again, this agreement is very similar to the previous agreement. Global Spectrum will be paid a base fee of $125,000 annually, with incentives in four different categories that could equal another $125,000 if they hit 100% of those incentives. The categories are listed as food and beverage revenue, event revenue, conference, convention attendees, and facility ma, facility maintenance, and customer satisfaction. The staff recommendation is to authorize the agreement, but we would be happy to take further direction at this time, and with that, I will stand for questions.
What's the current number of conference and convention attendee nights?
The current number at today?
Well, I know there's construction. Lauren, that was going to interrupt some.
Sure. That number has fluctuated over the years, from the time that Global has been involved, from a high of about 2,800 to a low of less than 1,000.
The low was earlier, or was that this year?
I don't have those statistics in front of me.
Where's it?
Sylvia, do you remember the fluctuating years? The high was 2013, I believe. And that, that can fluctuate depending on the events that are coming to the, to the center. That was, the high year, I know there was a... Sure, sure.
Sorry.
Get the band that knows here.
To the wolves' air. In 2013 was our high year. We had a fairly large convention that was not an annual event, that had a considerable number of attendees and number of days, and that really spiked the charts. Years, in most of the years that we have been here and operating, it's been around the 1,000 to 1,200 number. This year, we have seen a fairly large spike in our convention business, so we haven't received those numbers yet. We'll get those from Sylvia and her staff here as the year kind of finalizes. But we have increased those numbers drastically, and next year's convention business is already up, in addition to bringing back almost all of the ones we've had this year. So we should see that number to continue to grow.
Is a convention conference attendee, would that be, you know, sometimes somebody does like a fundraiser, like the Kansas Wesleyan does, or, or a Christmas party or something like that? What do those count as?
That would be a banquet.
Okay.
Or a social function. So there's, there's a number of different elements, I mean, obviously, or different event categories, sports and, and different things, and those would not be factored into that number. Those numbers, in general, have been closer to 8,000 or 9,000 in total over the last few years, but the, the performance measure is specific to that one category.
So a single meeting of a local organization there would count?
Would not go into effect in that.
Would still be banquet.
In that performance measure, correct. We do keep track as best we can on those numbers as well, but that's not the intent of that performance measure.
My next question would kind of go towards just every category in general, and that is, is just, you know, we have sort of the projected 2016 numbers, which will be probably not quite a full year of, like, everything upgraded. Would that be right?
Well, we finished a considerable amount of projects this summer, basically blocking off the arena from June to September.
Okay.
So we had a considerable amount of dark time still yet this year.
Okay. So 2017 will be the first real...
Correct.
What, and my question just basically is, what is, organizationally, what's your organization's sort of goals or hopes that you would have in regard to some of these numbers from '13, at least through '16? With all the improvements and everything, are you looking at attendance increasing to what, and so on? I mean, what are some of your general thoughts on that?
I'll speak, and then I'll let Rick jump in from the organization standpoint. We definitely think that our business is growing, and you can see that just from looking at our website, the number of events that we have on sale. Currently, we're over a dozen of unique events on sale. That counts, you know, our tenant teams as one event, not the number that they have. So as far as business and the arena side, we're as busy as we've ever been, and I would argue, in a considerable number of years, even prior to us being here. So that's great, and it's great to see that, that interest and, and commitment to some of our, our partners and promoters and different groups that we've worked with, that they are wanting to continue to come back and bring some of their new products. We've had several national touring promoters that have been here for the first time and are, are now looking to come back, which is reassuring and speaks to the volumes of what we're doing here, and the improvements that have been made, and, and the, the interest in our facility just throughout the region. On the convention side, and you know, Sylvia can see this, too, is we've had some, some fairly large conventions this year that have been very successful. Numerous of them have, have actually grown, and they've rented either more days or more parts of our facility. We have several that are using both the arena and the convention space at the same time to, to house their, their groups. We've had a lot of activity with some, some groups that have been here in the past that have went away for a while, and we've been able to get them to come back. We had a great event in October of this year that had left to go to a place that had a meet-and-sleep facility neighboring it, and we were able to creatively talk them into a way of coming back, and, and they're already looking to get dates back on the calendar for next year. So from my standpoint, I think the, the future is very promising, and I think that the renovations have went over very, very well, and people seem very pleased and happy, and we're seeing that in our event load and the attendees.
I mean, I guess, just add what he said, you know, we, we want to get that number below 450. You know, that's, that's our number, we want to get below $450,000, and that's our target model, target that we always talk about. How can we get it down closer to 400? So with the renovations, the ability to do bigger shows, it's also not just the ability to do better, bigger shows, but it's also a safety issue, too, that needed to be done, because when we do, we were doing some of those shows with the snow load, if it was in the, in the wintertime, it's, it's dangerous. So, you know, we never, we wanted to make sure it was safe, our patrons were safe, too. So that's one of the reasons why we did this as well. But yeah, I mean, that's our goal. I mean, really, to get, to continue the events that Ron, we have a lot of events on sale right now, a lot of good quality events, and to continue that and get the promoters to come back. WWE is a great example. We want to try to get them to come back, and if we start getting these annual events every year, then we can start building into snowballs, so that's what our, our goal is, to continue this.
One last question. Probably wouldn't have paid attention to it if you hadn't got the correction on here, but was there any particular reason the incentive targets were reduced by 300 a year? I was just looking at the, it was in page nine, section three, 3.2.
The last, the last two years?
No.
Each year was cut, the first year was cut down by 300, and then that 300 difference continued all over.
You're talking specifically to the hotel convention night portion?
Yes.
Correct. So, so the, the information included some additional events that were meshed together? So when we began to look at that, and I said, well, you know, we, when you're specifically talking about conventions and, and conference nights, we dissected it to those events specifically, and what that hotel generation was, and the number was lower in that highest year of 2013 than what it had originally shown when they were grouped together. So it was merely just a, a proper allocation of what the event nights were in that year, and that just sparked more conversation to make it a more realistic target.
Right. So these are people who are theoretically spending the night?
Correct.
In town?
Correct. Either prior to their meeting, or multiple nights, or whatnot.
I think, I think we should also mention, too, we consulted with Sylvia Rice several times on that as well. So we kept turning the loop, and we asked her advice and for targets and stuff, so...
That's a good endorsement.
And so, and I just didn't read through the whole thing, and I appreciate that question, because it's just right now, but it might understand that you guys work quite a bit to make sure that the accounting of those is, is in line with, with visiting Salina and... and what they're?
The, the numbers are actually given to us from Sylvia. So Sylvia works with the hoteliers and, and collects those numbers for us as that third party to provide that information to us at the end of each year.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, any public comment? There's some good shows going on over there, so you people out in the audience there, the community access audience, come see what they have. Okay, waiting for a, a motion on a resolution 16-7416.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 16-7416, authorizing the mayor to execute the management agreement with Global Spectrum LP.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution 16-7416. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. 7.5.
Item 7.5, adopt the 2017 business plan for the Salina Bicentennial Center.
Thank you. This topic is to adopt the business plan for the Bicentennial Center for year 2017. As outlined in the management agreement, Global Spectrum prepares a budget annually to look at the upcoming three years. The city of Salina has given Global Spectrum a goal to meet in regards to the operating margin as defined in the agreement. The proposed budget falls within the parameters of the management agreement that we've just previously discussed. In the blue sheet, I've included a table that outlines the budget, and also a table that outlines the funding sources. Funding is a combination of a portion of the transient guest tax and the general fund. At this time, staff would recommend the approval of the 2017 business plan for the Bicentennial Center, and we will stand for questions.
Any questions?
Is the, does the general fund allocation increases, well, increased from 15 to 16, and stayed flat? And our goal obviously was to get that number down?
Correct.
Over time. With the guest tax revenues somewhat less, I guess, or do we count 2015 as a?
2015 was an unusual year in guest tax, and it had a definite spike. I personally can't speak to why that, why that happened, but 2016 and 17 are more realistic numbers for the guest tax.
Was that Jaded Thunder or anything like that? Okay. I have a question that kind of is along with that, and that is, is what was 2014? Because that might, I mean, if 2015 was an outlier, 2014, do you know what 2014 was? What the?
Great question.
Guest tax was on that?
Unfortunately, can't answer that as we stand here, but be happy to research that and find out.
And then part two of the question is, is it looks like you're kind of getting closer to getting down. What are we anticipating for 2018 that will kind of cause it to go in the other direction?
Sure. Michelle and I worked on the, the general fund numbers. 2018, we did not put in a target, and I'm going to bring her up and have her help speak to that.
I mean, I like that it turns the corner and goes back up, but just kind of curious if...
We put question marks in.
Yes.
I think with the anticipation of some additional hotels coming online, the Hilton Garden Inn with the convention center, and then potentially some other hotels that might be in existence at that point, when we discuss the 2017 budget later next year, I'm sorry, the 2018 budget later in 2017, hopefully we'll have a better idea. Again, we can't look at 15 really because of the spike. 16 was closer to 14.
Okay.
We are hoping to see an increase, though.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Public comment?
Jason, do you happen to know what that general fund payment in 2014 was?
No, I don't. I don't have that in front of me either.
Any ideas if it was closer to 120 or closer to 260?
It would be higher than the 120 because you're, I would expect, because, and without, I'd have to go back and look at their 2014 bottom line with the facility, because there's really a couple of factors that dictate the general fund piece. One of them is, is how the facility performs, and the other is, you know, is the guest tax. The guest tax would be lower than the 588, probably, probably closer to the high fours, I'm guessing, 460-ish, 470. That's a guess, a speculation, because the 588, 588,000 plus was, was a spike, and, and we know there were, we believe there were some construction jobs and other things where people were staying in that spike. So you got to, when we think about realistically what that number was, it was probably in the mid semi-high fours. That's, that's one piece of it. And so that's about as close as we could get, and then, but it takes those two variables to really kind of get the net out of it.
Historically, what was that, what was, what was the subsidy, close to a million?
Yeah, when, in probably the worst years, if we count all aspects of it, we were pushing between 900,000 and a million totally in subsidizing the facility. That's when we said timeout, that's enough, that's not our, the thing we do best, let's look and find someone who's, that, that is their thing, and then that's, that's how we came up with Spectrum.
And we started the search.
Yeah, so 260 is not a red flag for anybody?
No, I don't think so.
All right, good.
No, and ideally, I think what you'll find, again, as your guest tax grows and you're, as they continue to work on hitting the margins with new facility and all the things, and their other, their opportunities we hopefully will have in the next couple, three years there as well, I think you'll see that go down lower than 260, but it's not a, it's not a bad place to be when we're at, you know, 900,000 or more at one point in time, it's pretty good.
Was that, most of that 900,000 from the general fund, or is it still split half and half?
It was still split. I'm trying to remember if the guest tax proportion was the same. I think, I think from an operating perspective, that was, but I think the only changes we've made with the guest tax are actually paying for improvement. So the guest tax amount would have been less, because even though it fluctuates up and down, and historically, you'll find that it's lower in the past and slowly increases as it fluctuates into the modern time. So it would have been a little bit less, but yeah, it would, overall, just what you said, that's exactly where it'd be, somewhere in there.
Prior to the management contract, the general fund subsidies range from 400,000 to 800,000. So the 260 is low, and again, we are budgeting conservatively for the 260 so that we don't have to come back to you and ask for a budget amendment in the fund, rather than budgeting low, and then having to come back and ask for additional expenditure allowance.
One aspect too, Michelle's probably not aware of, still being new, is that when you go back before the contract, when you see it go back, when she mentioned like 400,000, the, I believe it was, all the personnel costs were out of that fund and in a different fund, so that would have been the net of that. If you add those back in, you're probably back up at least 600,000-ish, maybe a little bit higher, so she wouldn't be aware of that. Unfortunately, I remember that.
I think we remember that. Okay. Any other public, any public comment? No? Okay. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the 2017 business plan for the Salina Bicentennial Center.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the 2017 business plan for the Salina Bicentennial Center. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. No development business? Is there any other business before we look at executive session?
Yes, there is. I'm just thinking of the Bicentennial Center. It's, I guess everyone has seen the big sign on Ohio right now, so there's no excuse for not being able to find your way to the Bicentennial Center. If you go slow enough, you can actually get about two or three shows in it. Madam Mayor, move to recess into executive session for 15 minutes for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved, and reconvene at 4:55.
Oh, do you have a second? Or no? All those in favor say aye? Whatever. I'll second. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I wondered where that went.